Alright, well, welcome everyone. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. We are so happy that you are here. Hopefully, you've all had a wonderful summer. It kind of went by really fast, so I, you know, hopefully it was a great one for everyone. Buenas noches a todos por estar aquí con nosotros hoy. Se los pasó el verano bien pronto, pero agradecemos que estamos, que están aquí hoy. Y ojalá hayan tenido un buen verano. So, con eso vamos a empezar. Mi nombre es Miss Torres y yo soy uno de los directores de la escuela González. Y estoy acompañada hoy para, con Mr. Kim, que es el otro director. Y estoy aquí con Anna Nguyen, que es nuestra coordinadora de instrucción. Y vamos a presentar una nueva coordinadora de padres, Larissa Martínez, en un ratito. So, welcome everybody. You know, for those who know me already and for our new parents, my name is Miss Torres. I am one of the principals at González. And tonight, joining me, we have Mr. Kim, who is also one of our principals. We have Miss Nguyen, who is our instructional coach. And Miss Martínez, who will, you all will meet, who will be one of our parent coordinators, after-school coordinators as well, who you'll get to meet later on today. So, welcome, Miss Nguyen. I know that we'll be tag teaming tonight, so with that, we can get started.
Alright. Alright, welcome everyone. We're so glad that you're here. This is our first official Parent Town Hall for the new school year. So this is so exciting that we're getting to be together and start off the year together as always. Just a reminder, so our mission and vision are to learn, grow, and serve, not only for our students but for educators as well, and empowering our students to be leaders and global citizens.
So como siempre repasamos la misión y visión de la escuela. Lo que queremos para nuestros estudiantes, maestros, nuestra comunidad, es que los estudiantes sean aprendedores, líderes y ciudadanos globales. Nuestra misión de continuar a aprender, crecer y servir.
Alright, here's our agenda for this evening. So we'll have our welcome, celebrations, updates to share, and there'll be time for questions and answers.
So ahorita estamos en la bienvenida, vamos a tener unas celebraciones, vamos a tener novedades y información importante para empezar el año escolar. Y luego tenemos tiempo para preguntas y sugerencias. Y terminamos siempre nuestras juntas con diciendo por qué estamos agradecidos hoy.
Alright, so starting off with celebrations. We have to share with you an update from our summer camp. Here are some photos of our summer camp leaders along with students and parents who got to come see our showcase at the end. We also have some photos from our art class, our gardening class, and we also have health and nutrition. And we had a really incredible GSA Olympics competition with students. And then some of the artwork here in the middle is from the ceramics class as well.
How many students did we have, Miss Nguyen?
One hundred twenty.
Alright, so aquí vemos fotos de nuestro campamento. Tuvimos ciento veinte estudiantes involucrados en diferentes clases. Aquí ven arte, jardín, tuvieron olimpiadas. Aquí vemos una foto de todos los educadores que estuvieron con nosotros este verano. Aquí continúan viendo a diferentes deportes que estuvieron jugando los estudiantes y también las piezas de arte que crearon en sus clases.
And another celebration to share is, here's a photo actually with Miss Martínez and Mr. López led our graduated eighth graders. We had about twenty-two, and we started with twenty-two. And this was an opportunity for them to have their first summer job. And so they supported summer camp by helping in classrooms, doing mentoring, beautification of the building, and also creating our bulletin boards and helping in the office.
Yeah, this is our third year that we partner with SGA, who allows us to have this beautiful program through one summer in Chicago. And hopefully, we look forward to having it again for our eighth graders next year. So aquí tenemos la celebración de nuestros estudiantes de octavo grado. Hemos tenido la oportunidad de darle la oportunidad a nuestros estudiantes de trabajar en la escuela en el verano. Este es el tercer año que lo hacemos. Ayudan en diferentes áreas como ayudando en los salones, ayudando en la oficina, ayudando a arreglar la escuela. Y para muchos de estos estudiantes es su primer trabajo donde reciben su cheque. Muy, muy felices nuestros estudiantes. So ojalá continúe este programa, esperamos que continúe para el año que viene.
Alright, these are some photos from our I L T leadership team. So our instructional leadership team, they work with the rest of our educators and they come up with ideas for continuing learning and growing in professional development for our educators at GSA. And these are photos of them working over the summertime to come up with plans for professional development that our educators will be a part of throughout the school year.
So aquí ven fotos de nuestros educadores, verdad? Nuestro I L T, que es un equipo de liderazgo. Ven aquí que están trabajando, planeando lo que, el aprendizaje que se van a hacer de nuestros educadores en este año que viene. Me están tomando tiempo, verdad, de sus vacaciones, de su verano, porque es trabajo importante. Estamos muy agradecidos por nuestros educadores que dan su tiempo para hacer estos planes que son tan importantes para los educadores, para los estudiantes. So aquí vemos a todos los maestros participando.
Alright, in this slide, we want to give a very, very special thank you to our GSA parent mentors and leaders for the leadership that you've shown in our community, for the way that you love and serve our students in GSA. And so a special shout-out to you for all the incredible work that you've done.
So queremos darle las gracias a todos nuestros padres mentores. Este año fue un año diferente, pero estuvieron ahí para ayudar a nuestros educadores, a nuestros estudiantes. Y aquí los vemos celebrando el fin del año. So gracias a todos los padres mentores. So si se encuentran aquí, muchas gracias por su apoyo.
And now we're going to be sharing some GSA updates and latest news as we prepare for coming back to school in less than ten days or so. So here we go, here's some updates to share. So first, our start date and end times. Our start date is August thirtieth, which is earlier than usual, but August thirtieth is when we go back to school. Early morning drop-off starts at seven fifteen a.m. Students are able to enter the building starting at seven twenty-five. School starts at seven thirty, they're in their classrooms getting ready for the day, and dismissal is at two thirty p.m. Alright, students will be returning to school five days per week. And our goal is that we have ninety-eight percent attendance, so that means no more than four absences per school year.
Okay, I don't know if it's me, Miss Nguyen, but you're cutting off a little bit. Is it me or is it? Larissa, can you hear Miss Nguyen okay? Yeah?
No, I think it might be Miss Nguyen.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so I mean, we heard most of it, but just let you know you're in and out a little bit. Okay, so un recordatorio que ahora este año vamos a empezar más temprano. Por favor, marquen sus calendarios que el lunes, el treinta de agosto va a ser el primer día de la escuela. Y todos los estudiantes van a regresar cinco días a la semana. Y un recordatorio que nuestro objetivo es que los niños tengan noventa y ocho por ciento de asistencia. So eso significa que no pueden tener más de cuatro ausencias por año. Okay, so también escribir esa meta. Can you guys hear me? Yeah, okay, I'm seeing, alright. Okay, so Miss Nguyen. And then just a reminder that we're still going to have the expectation of health screeners to be completed. So I know that if your child returned in fourth quarter, you've been doing the health screeners. If you came during summer camp, you've been coming to, you've been completing the health screeners. But for those parents who have been remote learning, this is just, you know, continuation of last school year, that all health screeners must be done each morning by seven a.m. You know, if you get it done by seven a.m., it helps us ensure that when we're checking, every child has that health screener completed. And we have some slides to show you what that looks like. Could you just?
Are you able to hear me, Miss Torres?
I am able to hear you now.
Sorry about that.
No worries. So aquí un recordatorio. El año pasado, se requirió que todos los niños hagan una evaluación de síntomas a través de P S. So estuvieron, si estuvieron aquí en cuarto periodo o en el verano, ustedes saben que se hace todos los días a las siete de la mañana y se está requiriendo para este año escolar también. Ahorita vamos a repasar cómo se hace para papás que quizás todavía no han regresado a la escuela. Son muy, muy importante que se hagan a las siete de la mañana la encuesta. Así tenemos la oportunidad de checar todos los estudiantes, porque vamos a tener todos los estudiantes regresando y queremos que chequear cada estudiante individualmente para chequear que la encuesta sea completada. So por favor, siete de la mañana.
And Miss Torres, just think, I'm not sure if you mentioned this or not, but if somebody doesn't know their child's email or their ID number, please call the office and we will get that information for you. And we also saw a question come up. Says, can we just complete the health screener or must we show it at the door along with the student? So we're going to answer that question right now. So if you take a look at this map, this is showing the entrances for arrivals. So we see door three and four is kindergarten first and then sixth through eighth grade. Door eight and nine are second, third, fourth, and fifth grade. And bussers coming through door one. And so what this means is at each of these doors, we have a team of health screeners who will have their laptops and they are able to see that your student completed their health screener. So you don't have to walk up to the door to show. We will have that on our end at the designated door.
So si no tienen, so cuando hacen la encuesta, se les pide el ID de su hijo o hija. So si no lo tienen, pueden hablar a la oficina para que se lo den, porque los van a necesitar para completar la encuesta. So aquí vemos una mapa de donde entran los grados. O ven aquí en puertas ocho y nueve van a entrar los estudiantes de segundo, tercero, cuarto y quinto. Y de puerta tres y cuatro, los de kinder primero y sexto a octavo. Y van a ver conos verdes y amarillos. Y les pedimos a los padres que por favor se mantengan su distancia atrás de esos conos y vengan con sus máscaras también y que sus hijos vengan preparados con sus máscaras, okay? So yeah, just a reminder, parents, that we're going to have cones up as barriers. They're green, yellow, you know, and we ask that you please stay behind those cones as students line up. And we ask that you and your child come with a, wearing a mask. Yeah. Anything else, Miss Nguyen, on this? Oh, y los estudiantes de, que vienen al bas, vienen por la puerta número uno.
Alright, I think that's good. So Miss Cruz has raised a hand. Miss Cruz, would you like to ask your question?
Sí, buenas noches. Los niños de pre-que, ¿por qué puerta van a entrar?
Los niños de pre-que entran por la puerta no nueve. So si está con Miss González o con Miss Gutiérrez, que vienen siendo el ciento cuatro o el ciento dos, entran por la puerta ocho. Los estudiantes que están con, en el salón ciento tres, entran por la puerta aquí enfrente, a donde ven mi flechita. Está una puerta aquí y por aquí entran los de ciento tres. Okay?
Yes, and so I see another question about the picnic. So we're going to give, share information with you about the picnic and it will be outdoors, so you won't need to complete a health screener. It'll be a little different this year. But what we want to do is we want to go through the health screener so you can see what that's like. And that will hopefully answer several questions and then we'll definitely have time to keep asking questions about this process. So this is what the health screener looks like. There will be a reminder sent to you every parent's cellphone every morning. What you'll do is you'll get to select the language and then click begin.
So aquí ven el inicio de la encuesta, donde pueden seleccionar el idioma. C P S va a mandar un link por su email para que pueda llenar esta encuesta por cada uno de sus hijos. Si tenemos su email, si han estado recibiendo letras de C P S, es porque tenemos su email. Si no han recibido, quizás necesiten hablar a la oficina para dar su correo electrónico, para tenerlo en el sistema. So just letting parents know that we, if you are not sure if your email is updated, one of the things you can do is just reach out to our office to make sure that your email is up to date, to ensure that you are receiving that link that C P S will be sending out for you to complete the screener.
Alright, so then what you would do is you would click on, you would click on the second button, so student, because your student is going to be visiting the building.
So clickear donde dice estudiante.
And then you would click on C P S student.
Clickear donde dice estudiante de C P S.
And then, in this place, you will enter your information. So your phone number, personal email address, and your relationship to the student.
So aquí se va a llenar su número de teléfono, su correo electrónico y la relación de usted con el estudiante.
And then you will choose the top option for daily school attendance.
So luego tenemos la opción y la opción que se va a hacer es de atendencia de la escuela, de la escuela.
And now this part is where you will need to know only one of these. Your student email or your student's ID number and their date of birth.
So aquí es donde va a necesitar quizás poner el, si tiene el correo electrónico de su hijo de C P S, pueden poner ahí, o si tienen el ID, se puede poner uno o el otro, pero no se necesitan los dos.
And then, in the next screen, you're going to type in González, but if you just type in the first few letters, you don't have to search through all of the schools, González will come right up.
Okay, so luego aquí van a entrar el nombre de la escuela y nomás poniendo los tres letras puede ver que sale nuestra, nuestra escuela y la dirección. Clickear la escuela.
And then, in the next few screens, you will see a list of symptoms. And so if your student has experienced those symptoms, you would click yes. If they have not experienced those symptoms and they're healthy, then you would click no.
So aquí las preguntas que se le van a hacer son sobre, si tiene aquí, ve los, la lista de síntomas, si su hijo los tiene, clickeas sí, sí no, clickean no. Y va a haber una serie de preguntas donde quiere que pone la respuesta sí o no. Y luego ya cuando termina, aquí se ve que completó. Está verde, que significa que su hijo puede entrar a la escuela. So this is just, you'll get a green screen at the end, letting you know that your child is able to enter the building. If you get a red screen, that means that your, that your child will need to be home because he failed one of the questions that you responded to.
And just one last thing about the health screener. You'll need to complete that for every single child that you'll be bringing to school. And somebody just commented in the chat that Aspen does have their student ID number. So if you're logging into Aspen to look at Parent Portal, you will be able to get their student ID number from there as well. Right. Alright, for our uniform policy, that will be going back into effect for our school year. So GSA students will be required to wear their school uniform while in person at GSA. And we have a link that we'll share about our uniform policy. You can purchase school polos or you can get your GSA logo stitched at DPE, which is located at this address on Kedsy. And for more information about GSA PE uniforms, I will share those links in the chat.
So este año escolar se va a requerir que los estudiantes vuelvan a usar su uniforme. Los polos van a querer que llega, que tener el logotipo de GSA. Y aquí tenemos la dirección y el número de teléfono donde se puede poner el logotipo de GSA en los polos. Y Miss Nguyen ahorita está poniendo en el chat información sobre qué es la póliza de uniformes y si quiere más información de cómo, de cómo agarrar uniformes quizás para la educación física. También está la informias, información ahí. Aquí vemos lo que necesitan los estudiantes, verdad? Es la, la maroon polo, tenemos los pantalones de khaki, un fajo negro o café. Y luego zapatos de sencillos, o que no tengan diferentes colores y luego su ID.
So we have our maroon polo shirts with the GSA logo, khaki pants, black or brown belt, and your student ID on the lanyard. And then you can see pictures of the types of shoes that are closed-toed shoes and no sandals as part of our uniform. Alright, so we have a couple of questions that came up. One said, if a student has symptoms and can't go to school, would that be counted as an absence?
Yes, it would count as an absence, yes.
And we have a question about uniforms. Maritza Avila said, are new IDs going to be distributed?
Yes, they usually get distributed somewhere in the first, maybe two weeks of school, two, three weeks. They will be handed out. So sí, la pregunta fue si identificaciones se les van a estar dando a los estudiantes y usualmente los hacemos en las primeras semanas del año escolar.
Alright, so the next section, we're going to talk about our student fees for 2021, 2022 school year. So the fees will go into effect July fourteenth and will charge as follows during this school year. The first child is eighty dollars, the second child is sixty, the third child is forty, and then fourth through ten, or how many students that you're bringing in your family, would be forty dollars. And what this fee includes is all of their school supplies that they'll need for the school year. And that way, we're making sure that all of the educators have requested really great, great quality materials. They want to make sure that every student has everything that they need. And then this is just a great way for us to get wholesale prices. And so some of the prices are a little bit more reasonable when we buy a larger amount for students. And so we'll make sure your student is able to have everything they need.
So aquí vemos la cuota que se va a hacer para los útiles. El año pasado no se cobró por, pues la, por la pandemia, pero este año vamos a regresar a la cuota de el primer hijo, va a ser ochenta dólares. Aquí ve el segundo, va a ser sesenta, el tercero cuarenta. Y ya después de ese tercero, si tiene más hijos, por cada uno van a ser cuarenta dólares. Y es algo muy importante que hagamos, porque los maestros ellos ordenan útiles de calidad, útiles que ellos quieren específicamente para lo que se va a hacer en el año escolar. So I think they're asking for the links. Ahorita podemos, vamos a repasar dónde se puede pagar. So we'll be, next slide, just showing how you can pay for the school fee.
Alright, so here's the link and we'll share that in the chat for how to pay for school fees. So our payment options for the 21, 2022 school year. So for student, returning students, fees will be required to be paid before the first day of school, August thirtieth, 2021. And new students, fees will be due as soon as parents complete their registration. And there's two ways to pay. One is with credit card and you can pay online. And I will drop that link right here in the chat. And then option two is using a cat, is using cash or money order. You're able to come to the main office during the hours of eight-thirty to one p.m., Monday through Friday.
So aquí tenemos las dos opciones. Miss Nguyen en el chat está poniendo dónde se puede pagar. Si está pagando con tarjeta de crédito, eso es la primera opción. O si quieren venir a la oficina, pueden pagar en la oficina. Aquí se ven las horas de ocho y media a una, puede venir.
I know we have some, I think we have some questions, Miss Nguyen. We do. So the first question is from the Pittman family. It says, if I already bought my own school supplies, do I need to pay fees?
Mr. Pittman, like we just said, you know, teachers are ordering specific items that are needed for this school year. They've planned, they've planned specific things, so that's why we're charging the fee. We've also done a lot of homework around, you know, just how much it would cost. And we found that doing it this way helps our families save money. And then if people are struggling for work through COVID, there are waivers and you can see Miss Avalos, who is overseeing our school utilities. So yes, to answer your question. And then I think I saw another one here. Oh, so la pregunta fue que si ya compramos los útiles, que si todavía se necesita pagar la cuota. Y lo que estuve explicando es que estamos queriendo que padres paguen esto, porque los maestros siempre quieren diferentes cosas específicas en lo que han planeado por el año escolar. So por eso es que estamos usando este sistema. Pero también vimos que usando, verdad, comprando en cantidades grandes nos ayuda a, a los padres a recibir cosas con menos costo, o ayuda en ahorrar. Y luego se, se la pregunta fue si una familia está teniendo dificultades, si hay ayuda, y la respuesta es sí, so pueden hablar con Miss Avalos en la oficina, si tienen esa necesidad.
Another question that we have is from Miss Avila. She said, if someone is going to be home because they have COVID-like symptoms and it's counted as an absent, couldn't they just do remote learning for that day? And so remote learning, there won't be an option for remote learning this year. Everyone will be learning in person.
So la pregunta que tenemos aquí fue si un estudiante tiene estos síntomas y se queda en casa, si puede hacer aprendizaje remoto. La respuesta es no, este año no va a haber aprendizaje remoto de ningún tipo. Todos los niños se espera que vengan a la escuela.
Alright, let's see. Miss Avila said, is there a list provided to see what the fee is going to be used towards specifically?
So each teacher is ordering their own specific material. So they get to go into kind of a C P S system and pick. And that's how they're, they're ordering. We don't have a list how we did before with things that students will need. So as of right now, there are no lists. So la pregunta fue si hay una lista de útiles que los estudiantes, que las maestras están comprando. Y la respuesta es que, que no. Ahorita las maestras cada una está ordenando cosas específicas para los estudiantes por cada salón. So como en años pasados había listas de útiles, ya no se va a usar los, las listas de útiles.
Alright, we have a question from Ricardo Petraza. And I believe she is referring to absentee. So it said, if kids get sick because they're going to school and that's going to count as an absence, who thought about this? How can something that's not in our hands affect our kids? Sorry, but that is wrong. We should have an option for those students. So one thing that they do have, and that's for medically fragile students, there is a virtual academy. And for those students, they've had medical documentation from their doctors to show that this, that a virtual academy is the safest place for them. And there's, there's only a very few amount of students at our school that have opted for that option for medical reasons. But for everyone else, will be returning in person. And we're going to go over more, some of the safety precautions that we're putting in place to keep everyone safe.
Alright, so la pregunta fue sobre contando las ausencias de niños porque están viniendo quizás a la escuela, se quieren que quedar en casa porque están enfermos. Las escuelas públicas sí tienen opciones de aprendizaje remoto, pero eso son para estudiantes que tienen enfermedades crónicas. Y en C P S hay una, hay una lista de esas enfermedades que puede calificar para ir a la, a la escuela habitual.
We have a question from Miss Wendy Wu. She says, parents of under twelve-year-old students were so worried about our kids' safety because they don't take the vaccine yet. Should all students need to keep a social distance? And we're going to talk more about the safety precautions that are in place. And we're also going to get feedback from everyone that's here about different options to see which option you feel most. to see which option you feel most comfortable with because your feedback is important for us.
Alright, so la pregunta fue, ah, hi, Ms. Wu, glad you're here. Um, la pregunta fue que, ah, como padre de un niño de doce años, ah, estamos preocupados por la seguridad. Ah, ahorita vamos a, a repasar, ah, lo que se va a hacer. Um, so maybe we should keep going, Ms. Wen.
Okay. Alright, so we actually have, um, a few openings, a few open seats, and we are recruiting students to come to Gonzales. And so if there are students that you know or families that you know that are trying to find a great place for their students to be, um, we have a flyer that we've sent out and we'll also share the link here with a QR code. And, um, as you can see in each of the grade levels, this is the number of open seats that we have. So there's a higher concentration of open seats in the younger grades. And then there's a few as we get to the older grades. Um, but if, if you know somebody looking for, ah, a wonderful school to join, um, I will share that link to this flyer and you can share that with friends and family as well.
Okay, so aquí vemos, padres, ah, estamos en necesidad de estudiantes. En especialmente ven en, en pre-K, en kinder, en primero, tenemos, ah, esos son los números de asientos que tenemos disponibles para estudiantes. So sé que Ms. Conejo ha estado mandando en nuestro bulletin de, de familias, ah, mandó este, este folleto aquí que ven, ah, dándoles información sobre todo los diferentes oportunidades y cosas que hacemos en la escuela de Gonzales. O si usted conoce a alguien, ah, que quiere traer su hijo a Gonzales, ah, por favor, ah, mandarle este folleto, compartirlo con, con ellos. Y Ms. Wen ahorita puso en el link el folleto. Sorry, I'm getting like wind or something.
So one really exciting thing that we're happy to share, um, and that's, we've had many requests about this. So GSA athletics, um, sports are going to be returning to GSA. And so returning fifth through eighth grade students interested in playing sports at GSA can fill out this Google form and we'll be sending emails with practice information for fall sports. And I will share that link in the chat.
So aquí tenemos anuncio de que van a regresar los deportes, ah, para atrás este año escolar. Ah, nuestros maestros ya están preparando los diferentes deportes. Ah, estamos recruitando a, a estudiantes. So si ustedes están interesados en que, ah, sus hijos estén en deportes, ah, podemos, ah, pueden llenar el, el link, ah, y, ah, para que puedan participar.
Alright, and now we're going to formally introduce Ms. Lisa Martinez. She will be leading our after-school programs and coordinating with parents and families. So Ms. Martinez, take it away.
Thank you, Ms. Wen. Good afternoon. I am Ms. Martinez. I am the new after-school coordinator for both students and parents. Eh, buenas tardes, mi nombre es la señorita Martínez y yo voy a ser la nueva coordinadora, coordinadora de programas para padres y estudiantes de escuela. Um, para empezar solo les quiero dar una, una previa ah, de todo, alguno de los programas que vamos a tener, eh, empezando el otoño. So I just want to give you guys a couple of previews of what we expect to have for the fall after-school programs. Um, para empezar, queremos traer de regreso el arte. So we'll be bringing back art for both, um, advanced and beginners. And al arte, el programa de arte va a ser para los niños principiantes y avanzados. And we will bring in a folkloric back for also for beginners and advanced. Igualmente vamos a regresar el folklorico para los principiantes y avanzados. We want to bring back breakdance as well. Ah, y también vamos a traer lo que era el programa de breakdance y algunos programas nuevos. Eh, que queremos traer es el STEM Lagos. So sería ciencias, tecnología, ingeniería y matemáticas pero basados en los legos. Ah, también regresará el mero, así que las clases de violín y chalo. Mary will also be back, so we will have both a chalo and violin. Y, ah, van a empezar de grados, de segundo grado a octavo grado. So they will be from second to eighth grade, since I saw that that was one of the questions in the chat. Ah, para los padres también queremos traer programas. Ah, queremos traer artes y manualidades, zumba y clases de inglés. We will also be bringing parent programs, or we want to bring parent programs, depending on what you guys want us to bring. Um, and of course, parent availability. So we would like to bring arts and crafts, zumba and ESL. Ah, si están interesados en agregar un programa que no está en la lista, por favor de comunicarse conmigo. Eh, mi información está aquí al lado, está mi correo electrónico y mi teléfono celular. Y podemos trabajar en traerle el programa que guste. So if you see any program that is not listed above, you can always contact me whether through email or cellphone and we can work on getting a program started for either students or parents.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Martinez. Alright, thank you so much. Um, so next we're going to share about our healthy student market, which is returning to GSA again this year. Um, GSA provides free nutritious groceries for families of students. And every Thursday we have an easy grab-and-go box filled with nutritious food by Door Six, which is at the back of the auditorium near Whi- on the Whipple side. Our final summer distribution date is tomorrow, Thursday, August nineteenth, from one-thirty P M to two-thirty P M. Make sure you wear your mask and practice social distancing.
Ah, solo más un recordatorio que la despensa se va a hacer, ah, ah, el final de verano es mañana, jueves diecinueve de agosto, de una y media a dos y media. So no se olvide usar su cubre bocas y practicar distancia social.
Alright, so next we're going to share about Chicago Peace Week, which is happening next week. Chicago Peace is an organization that has selected three schools to support during the week of August twenty-second through twenty-eighth. And there will be special events happening at GSA for families to join on August twenty-fourth through twenty-eighth. Chicago Peace es una organización que ha seleccionado tres escuelas para apoyar durante el veintidós, el veintiocho de agosto. Habrá eventos especiales en GSA para que las familias se unan del veinticuatro al veintiocho de agosto. Alright, and this next slide shows our schedule of special events that's happening each day. So starting with Tuesday, August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one. So Social Works, which is Chance the Rapper's nonprofit organization, they will be joining GSA, providing mental wellness resources. There will be a Chick-fil-A lunch, a donation of three hundred chicken sandwiches, and the location will take place at the main entrance from eleven A M to one P M. So Social Works, recursos de bienestar mental. Donacion de el melu- el melueso, el muerso de Chick-fil-A a trescientos sandwiches de pollo. Locacion entrada principal once y uno de la tarde. For Wednesday, we will have a community art project taking place. This is really, really great and we hope every family can come check it out and be a part of this. So GSA families and staff are invited to come to door three and make a tile for a community mosaic. Um, and this will happen from nine A M to three P M. So pick a time that works for your family, come on by, and everyone in your family can make a tile for this project. So mercoles, eh, veinticinco de agosto, veintiuno. Proyecto de arte comunitario, las familias y el personal de GSA vienen a la puerta tres para hacer una loceta para el proyecto, locacion puerta exterior de tres. Nueve a la mañana, tres, or a tres de la tarde. For Thursday will be Compassion Thursday. And there will be school supply giveaways, groceries, hot meals, medical screenings and immunizations. This will take place outside of the main entrance from eleven A M to one P M. Jueves veintiséis de agosto, veintiuno, jueves de bienes, bienestar. Van a pasar útiles, escolores, comestibles, comidas calientes, exámenes médicos, recunas, locacion entrada principal once a uno de la tarde. For Friday, we'll have our back-to-school picnic, and we have a lot more details about this. But for our back-to-school picnic, you'll be able to come meet your educators. There's fun food and games from twelve P M to three P M. And there will also be a job fair from nine A M to four P M on the Sacramento side. And we have different, um, employers coming such as Target, Leo Burnett and more. So vernes veintisiete de agosto, veintiuno, the picnic de regreso a la escuela. Ven a conocer a sus educadores. Habrá diversión, comida, juegos, locacion entrada principal doce y tres de la tarde. And tarea de trabajo nueve a la mañana a cuatro de la tarde. And then Saturday we will wrap up the, the peace week with a peace festival at the Dos Sables Museum from nine A M to eleven A M. And then there will be a peace walk from eleven A M to two P M. A peace festival, food, games and activities for families. Make sure you wear your mask. Festival de la paz, sábado veintiocho de agosto, veintiuno. Um, un festival de la paz en el museo Dos Sable, dos eventos, nueve a la mañana, ah, once a la mañana, caminando por la paz, once, once a dos de la tarde. Festival de la paz, comida, juegos, actividades para familias. Alright, and then we have our back-to-school picnic taking place on Friday, which is an annual event. And we had to do a virtual, virtual one last year. So we're so excited to be able to have, um, a safe, in-person back-to-school picnic. Here are the details for that. Picnic de regreso a la escuela, veintisiete, ah, veintisiete agosto, ah, doce a tres de la tarde. Todos le educa- educadores de salón de las clases están creando un recorrido en video virtual de su salón de clases que se puede encontrar en el sitio web. En lugar de que las familias entran al edificio para ver los salones de clases, esta alternativa se guerra permitir que los estudiantes y las familias conozcan, conozcan a los educadores y vean su clase. The carnival GSA, juegos, tank de inmersión, bocadillo, carrera, um, carrera de obstculos infables. Uniforms disponibles para su compra en la parte tercera de artorio en Whipple. And so from twelve to three next Friday, all classroom educators are creating virtual tour of their classroom that will be found on the website and their bio. So you click on your student's teacher, there will be a video of your student's classroom and they will also walk through what you can expect and information about health screenings and arrival. And instead of families coming into the building to see the classrooms, this safe alternative will allow for students and families to still get to meet each other outside for a GSA carnival. There'll be games, snacks, dunk tank, inflatable obstacle course. It's going to be so much fun. And then uniforms will be available for purchase in the back of the auditorium on Whipple. And everyone is required to wear your mask.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Wen. Ah, aquí vemos Ms. Wen practicando su, su español. So gracias a Ms. Wen. Um, so the next, ah, two slides were, um, we're going to talk about sneeze guards and face shields. Um, these sneeze guards will be placed in our lunchroom, um, so that there is a barrier between students when they are, ah, eating. Um, but we want to hear from you today if this is something that you think you would want your child to have in the classroom. We did talk to, um, teachers who have been at GSA. Ah, and you know, we, ah, Mr. Kim polled, ah, a few teachers. And for the most part, most teachers said that they didn't want these sneeze guards um, in the classroom, for the exception of maybe one or two teachers. But nonetheless, um, our educators wanted to also hear from you. So we're going to have, I'm going to ask you one of two options. So for sure, we will have these sneeze guards in the lunchroom. But I'm want to ask and I want to poll parents if you indeed want these in the classroom. Like if it's something that you think that we should get. Or another option would be around the face shields. Or is it something that instead of these sneeze guards, we do, ah, face shields for our, our students? Um, one of the things that we, ah, I will be talking about a little bit later. You know, hopefully you all received an email from CPS, just letting you know about social distancing. And I'll go over those a little bit, ah, in a few slides. Um, but masks will have to definitely be worn. So we just want to get your, um, get your input when it comes to the sneeze guards or the face shields. And I'll do a poll right now. I see people already, um, kind of doing it in the chat, but I, I will do a poll so that you guys can, can have, um, a say. So padres, ah, aquí se ve una guardia de estornudos que se va a utilizar en el lonche para separar los niños cuando, ah, están comiendo y no tienen sus máscaras puestas. Ah, la pregunta que les quiero hacer hoy a los padres, ah, si piensan que, ah, pueden, ah, necesitar esto en clase, durante clase. Ah, por lo menos, ah, hablamos con los maestros y, ah, hicimos una encuesta con, ah, educadores que han estado viniendo a la escuela. Y por lo, la, por lo menos ellos dicen que, que no se necesitan los guardias de estornudos, pero querían saber, ah, qué es, qué sugerían los, los padres. Ah, y si no usamos aquí las guardias de estornudos, hay estas, ah, face shields que puede ser quizás otra opción si no se usan las guardias de estornudos. So, si ustedes, ah, ah, voy a hacer una encuesta, okay? So la primera pregunta va a ser sobre los face shields. So si me dan un segundo.
And, and while Ms. Torres is getting the poll ready, um, there is a question about the sneeze guard. So yes, it is transparent. You can see through it. The picture that we showed still has the plastic of the sample that they sent us because we ordered a few different samples to see.
Okay. Alright, so I can't do the poll. So here's what I'm going to do. So I'm going to put sneeze guards first in the chat. And as soon as I, so it's, it's, it's one or the other, so it's not both. So queremos oír de ustedes, es uno o el otro, pero no los dos, okay? So si prefieren los sneeze guards, las guardias de estornudos, pongan sí ahorita en el chat. También pongan o pongan no si quieren la otra opción. So sí para los sneeze guards. So se acuerdan, no es para los dos, es para uno o para el otro.
Can you ask the question again in English?
So I just dropped in the chat if you would prefer the face shield, the sneeze guard. So we're not doing, um, we, we're not doing both, right? We're not doing the, the sneeze guards or the face shields. So we're, we're asking what would a preference be, okay? Alright, so now.
So I have a quick question.
Yes.
Um, and this is going to be for outside of the lunchroom, correct?
This is for the classroom. So la pregunta es para el salón. So the question is, do we want the sneeze guards in the classroom? So de seguro los vamos a tener en lonche. So we are going to get them for the lunchroom. But the question is for the, ah, snee- ah, for the classrooms. Okay? Alright, um, face shields, I hope this works. So face shields, I'm dropping in the face shields now. So if you prefer the face shields, please put yes or no.
And thank you everyone for your feedback. Um, Ms. Torres, I Ms. Torres, I see two questions. Two people have their hand raised. Mateo Rivera, if you would like to share your question first?
Um, yes, actually, my, my kids are, they're gonna be kindergarten. So I'm sorry, first grade. My question is, if you have, if you guys have the, the sneeze guards in the lunchroom, would it be safe if they have the face shield in the classroom as well with the mask, along with the mask, or no?
They would have to wear both. They would have to wear the mask and the face shield.
But would you, would you guys be able to do both? Like the sneeze guard in the lunchroom and the face shield in the classroom?
Yeah, so, so the, the sneeze guards will definitely be for the lunchroom. Like we are getting those.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, I guess the, I guess my question is, or I'm confused. The sneeze guards will also be in the classroom?
So that's what we're polling right now. So do we want, do, do, we want to possibly do the sneeze guards? Which is what you're seeing here? Or do we want, would we want to do the face shields? So we're not, you know, they do the, technically the same thing. But that's why we're, we're polling. We won't, we won't do both. Not, not that we won't do both, but you know, it's, it's one or the other. They, they do the same thing. So that's what we're polling, for the classroom specifically.
Okay.
So I have, I guess a comment.
Sure.
So I have a first and second grader. I can't imagine wearing a face shield for an entire school day. It'd drive them nuts. I also think that the sneeze guard will cause them to be disengaged, sitting, sitting behind them in class for my sixth grader coming back in. So are we saying that they will be wearing these face shields all day? Or they'll be wearing regular face masks like when kids are going back for the last few months of school?
Yeah, so thanks for your, your comment, Mr. Pittman. So our teachers, you know, we have been talking to a few, and they've said kinda the same things that you're, you're saying, that it can be a distraction, right? I mean, as adults, it's hard to wear a mask and a face shield. It gets really hot, really uncomfortable. Our teachers are saying that they're okay with the social distancing, right? Having a mask on would be enough and feel safe, right? With the social distancing in the classroom. And as, and I'll go over what CPS is saying as far as social distancing in the classroom. But nonetheless, we're polling because they wanted to hear from our parents. So, and I'm gonna translate, okay, Mr. Pittman? So la, la pregunta de Mr. Pittman, no, no es pregunta, pero comentario. Dice que estas las guardias de estornudos quizás pueden distraer a los estudiantes y que las otras de la, de la cara quizás se va a hacer difícil, verdad? Uno como adulto cuando usa la máscara y el face shield. Es difícil para estar en, en él porque se pone caliente. Eso dice el que no puede imaginar un estudiante usandolos todos los días. Y por lo menos con las maestras que hemos hablado, ellas sugieren, han dicho de lo mismo. So han dicho que ellas se sienten seguras, verdad? Con, que los niños tengan las máscaras, que los mantengamos a distancia socialmente, verdad? Y voy a repasar lo que están sugiriendo las escuelas públicas. Pero los educadores también querían oír de ustedes. Que si sugieren, si se sienten okay, verdad? Que nomás los niños traigan las máscaras y que los mantengamos a distancia. O si se sienten más seguros que traigan quizás el, el face shield o quizás la, para las estornudos, la guardia de estornudos. Okay, so tenemos todas las respuestas grabadas. Gracias, y si tienen alguno, algún comentario, por favor póngalo en el chat. So please continue, you know, put your, your comments in, in the chat on how you feel about either, either one of these. We definitely have those recorded. So Ms. Wen, just for the sake of time, I'm going to just do both of the, the rest of this in English and Spanish so we can quickly go through it, okay? So les voy a dar la información que las escuelas públicas los ha dado. Y si lo mandaron a correo electrónico, so quizás ya lo han visto. So I'm gonna just go over some of the CPS updates that CPS sent out to all our parents. So you may have already seen some of this. So as you can see here, some of the things that they're gonna do to continue to keep everyone safe. They will have the ventilation systems, which we have in each classroom. We have multiple ventilation systems in areas like the lunchroom. They are still gonna continue universal masking, so everyone has to wear a mask. They're continuing social distancing. And they're suggesting, you know, CDC guidelines say three feet apart. So we're going to adhere to that whenever possible. So three feet of social distancing whenever possible. So as you see, you know, in the lunchroom, we are gonna have those sneeze guards because, you know, they, it may be a little bit less than three feet, but nonetheless, they'll have the, the sneeze guards in between. Contact tracing will still continue. So if a student is reported with COVID, you know, they will trace what classrooms they were in and, and ensure that parents are notified. Good hygiene, there will be sanitizing stations in high-traffic areas in the classrooms. So the lunchroom, right, the hallways, the bathrooms, there will be sanitizing stations throughout our building. And then just health messaging, just reminding students to keep their distance, to remember to sanitize their hands. So those reminders will be posted all over the school. So aquí tenemos para mantener la seguridad, todavía va a haber ventilación entre todos los salones en lugares como el gimnasio, en el lonche, todavía se van a mantener esa ventilación. Se va a requerir que todos los estudiantes usen su máscara. Vamos a mantener este distancia social. CDC está, está sugiriendo tres pies cuando posible, okay? So vamos a tratar de seguir los tres pies cuando es posible. Y vamos, y todavía van a seguir de contactos. O si alguien se contagia con COVID, van a recibir notificaciones. Y qué va a ser el proceso, verdad, de, de los pasos que se van a tomar. Hay para sanitizer, para lavar las manos en todos los salones, en los baños, en diferentes áreas donde hay mucho tráfico en la escuela. Y por toda la escuela se van a ver mensajes de salud para recordar a los estudiantes de mantener su distancia social y de lavarse las manos. So in hands cleaning and sanitizing, so CPS hired an additional 400 custodian positions. So what does that mean for us at GSA? That we got one person, an extra custodial person? Well, again, we have sanitizer, we have soap. All our classrooms will have disinfecting wipes. Our custodial will be cleaning with hospital-grade disinfectant sprays. And they are providing those sneeze guards and the signage. So by limpieza, CPS ha dado 400 adicionales posiciones para limpieza. Y a nuestra escuela se los dio una persona adicional. Como dije en denantes, va a haber desinfectante y jabón para los niños. Va a haber toallas para desinfectar en todos los salones. Van a usar un desinfectante que se usa en como nuestros petales para limpiar. Y va a haber la protección de estornudos y van a ver los, las señas por todo el edificio. There will be surveillance testing. So we have been doing the rapid COVID tests. And this year, they will be testing students as well. So there will be surveillance testing. There will be free COVID testing for students and staff who have been in contact with somebody who has tested positive for COVID. And then, again, you will be receiving, you know, emails and notification if there is somebody who tests positive in our school. So va a haber pruebas de vigilancia. Este año escolar, los maestros fueron dados exámenes, verdad? Para ver si tienen COVID. So eso se va a continuar, pero este año van a añadir que los estudiantes también se hagan la prueba. Va a haber pruebas gratuitas para estudiantes o maestros o un miembro de familia que quizás se contagió o ha estado cerca con alguien que ha estado contagiado con COVID-19. Y se van a continuar las notificaciones. O si alguien en nuestro edificio, verdad, educador o estudiante son positivos, se les va a dar notificación a todos los padres. CPS va a tener dos town halls, so dos reuniones. Y aquí están las fechas, y Ms. Wen puso en el chat para poder registrarse donde van a estar dando más información y pueden hacer más preguntas de lo que se está haciendo. So here you see that CPS will have a town hall. There is one today, and there's also one tomorrow. So there is the registration link if you would like to just ask any additional questions to our district representatives that will be in these town halls. So I know there's a lot of questions. Sé que hay muchas preguntas. It's 8:05, but we can, you know, stay on for a few more minutes to talk about and try to answer as many questions, you know, as, as we can. So Ms. Wen, I don't know if you've been keeping track, but maybe we can start with. I know people have their hand raised, so if you wanna come off mute, you can go ahead and do so.
Hi, I'm sorry, how many kids are there gonna be per classroom?
So we are anticipating full classrooms. So they, our classrooms range anywhere from, you know, in our primary, we kinda have low numbers right now, maybe seventeen, eighteen, and range up to thirty students.
And how would they be socially distanced? Like, my concern is, is the classroom big enough for them to be three, four feet apart from each other if there's thirty students in the classroom?
Yeah, so we will be trying to keep students at the CDC guidelines, right? Of three feet whenever possible. So that is our, our goal.
Alright, we have another raised hand.
Let me, let me just translate that real quick. So la pregunta fue, cuántos estudiantes va a haber en el salón? Y cómo se van a mantener la distancia social? So va a haber, estamos esperando que regresen todos, se van a regresar todos los estudiantes cinco días a la semana. So dependiendo del salón, en los clases de primaria, tenemos los números un poquitos más bajos, de como dieciocho a veinte, pero ya en los salones de, de tercero y para arriba, quizás de veinticuatro a treinta estudiantes. Vamos a tratar de seguir de tres pies cuando posible de la sugerencia que está dando el CDC y las escuelas públicas.
Alright, our next question, Rafael Ochoa, you have your head, had your hand raised for a while. Would you like to ask your question? Alright, we'll go ahead and go, move on to Jeffrey Marquez, Marquez?
Oh, sí, perdón, no, soy la mamá de Yareci, yo creo que está mal el nombre. Respecto a los niños de autobús, dos preguntas. Seguridad en autobús y rutas, porque Yareci regresó los últimos meses a clases. Y cuando por año su ruta ha sido de veinte a treinta minutos, se convirtió en más de una hora, hasta hora y media la ruta. Qué va a pasar con, con la seguridad y las rutas, por favor?
Sí, pues la seguridad de lo, del BASS va a continuar lo mismo. So van a tratar de mantener esa distancia social. Van a tener para que los niños se limpien las manos, van a requerir máscara, van a tomar temperatura antes de que entren al BASS. Y se va a querer que requerir el, la encuesta antes que se suban al, al BASS. Y de las rutas, eso ahorita no sabré decirle. Si quiere hablarle a Ms. Kehew, que es la que se encarga de las rutas del BASS, ella le puedo, le puede dar más información. So the question was around just for our busters, what does safety look like? And, you know, mom is saying that the route that her daughter was taking was twenty minutes and then, you know, turned into an hour and a half. So as far as the bus routes, you would need to contact the office and just speak to Ms. Kehew to find out what the bus route looks like. As far as safety for the bus, they're gonna continue with sanitizing, they're gonna continue with social distancing on the bus. You know, students will be required to do the health screener before getting on the bus, and temperatures will be checked before they get on the bus. So they'll still be continuing with those health, those health protocols.
Alright, thank you. Our next question is, I see Rafael Ochoa, your hand is up again. Would you like to ask your question?
Rafael Ochoa, están llamándole?
Sí.
Oh, es que no entendía por el inglés que le son. Okay, este, mi pregunta es, tengo un niño de, de, para preschool, para prekindergarten. Entonces mi pregunta es, él está aceptado por CPS, pero él entra hasta en septiembre. No sé si puede aplicar él, digo, puede aplicar yo ahí en la escuela en la González. Tengo un niño de, de que va a entrar a primer grado.
Sí, señora, si quiere, hable a la oficina mañana para que le den información. Puede hablar con Ms. Cornejo or Ms. Kehew para que le puedan dar la información de cómo registrarse. Porque si tenemos campo.
Oh, perfecto, entonces mañana mismo hablo.
Okay.
Muchas gracias.
La esperamos ahí, señora. So the question was around just again, pre-K, kinder, if you want to register your student, you know, please call our office, reach out to Ms. Kehew or Ms. Cornejo, and they will gladly help you ensure that you register your children to bring them to González.
Alright, and we had a question, raised hand, that was our last raised hand, and then we will move to the chat. So from Maritza Avila, you have a question?
Yes, my question was, you know, for the absences, for the school's attendance, is there any way that students are gonna be excused from their absences if they fail the screen test? Because we don't want parents to be sending their children to school if they have symptoms just because they already used up their four days of absences.
Yeah, and, and that's a goal that we stick to. But obviously, if students, right, are feeling ill, that they have a cough, right? They feel the screener. Yeah, we are saying, you know, err on the side of caution and, you know, just remain at home to ensure that, you know, your child is safe and that everyone at school is safe. However, when your child is not at school, they will count as absences. We cannot record them as present, being in school.
But they can't get excused?
You can write a note, and it'll be an excused absence.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I had another question. Will COVID-19 tests be available to students who fail the health screeners?
I believe for right now, it only states if you have come into contact with somebody who has tested positive for COVID. That's how it will be done, not necessarily if, you know, my son has a cold. Although they will be, I believe, selecting students to test for, for COVID. They will be, you know, will get a list, and those students will be eligible to, to do that.
Okay, sorry, and I had another question as well.
It's okay.
Is it gonna be more staff keeping charge of supervision for social distancing in the school? I only ask because the times that I have dropped off my daughter to school in the mornings or picked her up, you know, everybody's really close to each other. The teachers are not doing anything, or staff isn't doing anything. They're not really enforcing the social distancing, or even inside the school.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll say, I mean, we have pause outside to, you know, ensure that, you know, students are staying three feet away. And again, it's, it's whenever possible is what the guidance that, that we've been given. So, you know, just like a lot of things, we have to continue working with our kids, working to ensure that they have their masks on and their keep. So it's, it's definitely a learning curve, especially for a lot of kids who haven't been in the building. They're gonna need a lot of reminders. And our staff is, you know, good about, you know, ensuring that they remind our students. But it's, it's definitely gonna be learning as well. But thank you for letting us know that that's some of the things that, that you've been seeing. So I'm not even translating. So preguntas, fue sobre, oh my gosh, I can't even remember now what the questions were. Do you remember what they were, Ms. Wen?
Okay, so the, the first question, or there was three questions. They were about social distancing outside, that was the most recent one. Do you wanna answer that one for arrival?
Yeah, so la mamá está hablando sobre qué se va a hacer porque ha visto que la entrada, los estudiantes están muy juntos y que no ha visto que las maestras o los educadores estén diciendo, dándole recordatorios. So vamos a hablar con los educadores para recordarlos, verdad, que es importante. Pero sí va a ser mucho aprendizaje porque tenemos varios estudiantes, verdad, que van a regresar. So teníamos doscientos estudiantes que regresaron, que significa que tenemos... So teníamos doscientos estudiantes que regresaron, que significa que tenemos quinientos, como quinientos estudiantes que no han estado a la escuela, so Continuar a enseñarles, verdad, que necesitan que mantener su distancia, mantener su máscaras, o va a ser mucha práctica en el principio con con ellos.
Alright, so we have, we have a lot of questions in the chat, so I'm gonna go ahead and keep reading through, so we have a question from Sergio Reyes, To do students switch classrooms for any reason?
So they will be switching for their essentials classes, so the arts, the gym. So they will be switching for that and middle school will be switching for their their different content area classes.
Alright, another question, we've had a few questions about the covid testing for students. So one question, question said, are students getting covid tested every week? Another question said, how often is this covid testing for students, is it daily, weekly?
It is weekly and I think there, there is a certain amount of kids that they will be testing. So they won't be testing all the kids every week, we will get a list, I believe, of students that are eligible to test. And I want to say that we will need like a parent permission to fill out for parents to allow us to test their student, Their child if they do get selected. So la pregunta fue si los niños, todos los niños van a ser, ha hecho el examen de covid y la frecuencia. Por ahorita lo que sabemos va a ser por lo menos una vez a la semana y nomás van a ser ciertos estudiantes cada semana. Se les va a pedir a papás que llenen un formulario dándonos permiso para hacer esos exámenes.
Alright, thank you, we have another question from Monica Gamaro. So CPS mentioned yesterday that half of the children would eat it in the lunchroom, the other half in the classroom, is that true for GSA? Also, will parents still be able to volunteer? So I can answer your lunchroom question, what we've done is measure the, how many feet apart And how many students can safely fit into the cafeteria using the sneeze guards? So if each grade level has three classes, we have a rotating schedule for which class will have to eat in the classroom For that week and then the other two classes can eat in the cafeteria with sneeze guards in between students And then the following week it'll rotate, so everyone gets a chance to be in the cafeteria, but it won't be all at the same time. We'll rotate the students in classrooms through.
So la pregunta fue que oyeron que los niños quizás van a Van a poder comer en el salón, quizás en el salón de lonche. La respuesta es que midimos y la capacidad que se va a poder tener en el lonche con los los guardias destornudos. Van a ser como dos salones, o un salón va a tener que comer en el salón Y vamos a hacer una una rotation, o rotar los que están comiendo en el salón con los que están comiendo en el lonche.
And then to answer your question about parents volunteering at GSA, absolutely, and we really would appreciate the help that we can get from parents. And actually, I'm sharing the link right in the chat for if you would like to sign up to volunteer. All volunteers would need to complete the volunteer process through CPS And they would have to follow the same safety precautions and health screeners and wearing a mask as all the rest of us as well.
So si pueden hacer voluntarias, si la respuesta es sí, so si se quieren registrar, van a querer que Requerir usar máscara y todo lo mismo para los, que que se sugiere para los estudiantes y los maestros.
Alright, our next question says, will a class need to quarantine if there is a positive covid case? So the answer to that question is that CPS would need to do an investigation and contact tracing as well. But yes, that that classroom and anybody who's come in close contact with that classroom would need to quarantine. And all parents would be notified and the communication would be kept open as well.
So la pregunta fue si un niño se contagia es positivo, si todos los estudiantes y el maestro quieren que ir en cuarentena. Y la respuesta es que CPS va a hacer una investigación, si ese es el caso Y ellos los van a dar los pasos de de qué se necesita que hacer.
Alright, another question from Emily Alvarez, will the kids go on field trips? We're going to plan as if we are able to go on field trips, but at this time, Miss Torres, would you like to share more updates about field trips if there haven't been?
You know, we just saw in in one of our handbooks That it it seems like it, but it hasn't, like, it's not very clear if it is confirmed that we'll have field trips. We're assuming that it may be, but again, we're waiting to hear just clear, you know, direction from from our district.
Field trips are approved.
Oh.
Yeah, it's just, yes, you know, now with the, you know, rising cases, we just want to be a bit cautious. We're not gonna be doing any of the overnights at this time. But we will be planning and our educators are submitting proposals for field trips to be done throughout the year.
Okay, so la respuesta, la pregunta, perdón, fue si van a continuar los paseos Y el distrito sí ha dado permiso de ir a paseos, pero vamos a monetizar la situación porque sabemos que está subiendo los casos. So por ahorita los los paseos donde los niños pasan la noche, quizás en un museo, por ahorita eso no los vamos a tener.
Alright, we have another question from Ricardo Petraza.
Entonces, si podremos entrar a ver las condiciones de el aula donde estarán nuestros hijos?
I'm looking for the question.
I work in my Spanish.
Oh, so they they wanna see, ask if we can come into to the classroom to see what they're look looks like, so. Vamos a, en el, la semana que que entra, los maestros Van a hacer videos de cómo se va a ver los salones para que ustedes vean cómo se van a preparar. Y vamos a poner esos videos en el sitio de nuestro website para que puedan ver. So the question is from a parent, if we'll be able to see the classrooms and the conditions they're in And the answer is that our teachers will be asked to record a video of what the classroom setup will be like for students And that will be posted on our GSA website for for your review, along with, you know, important information for you and your child.
Alright, we have another question from Emily Alvarez. She says, okay, so if student tests positive for covid and you can't go to school for two weeks, There's not going to be, is there not going to be virtual school for students who get sick and can't go to school, will they miss two weeks of school?
That's a good question, I don't have an answer for you as of right now, I don't, Mr. Kim, correct me if I'm wrong. We haven't heard if kids quarantine, right, if there will be like a virtual situation?
No, so we would do the same thing, we, you know, our goal is to have in person, but if the student is at home And is quarantining, they would log in like they did before in a remote setting, you know. So and the other students who the district proves that we're not in close contact and it's fine. Remember, this happened, you know, in many schools over the spring, they they can return While the the particular student that the district deems as needing to quarantine learns from home.
Okay, great, thank you for clarifying. So la pregunta fue si 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 quieren que ir en cuarentena, si la va a haber oportunidad de aprendizaje remoto Y Mr. Kim me acaba de aclarar que sí va a haber opción para estudiantes para estar en clases habitualmente.
Only when that's the case confirmed covid, this is not an option for, no es una opción para Regresar al aprendizaje remoto, eso es solamente en casos donde se ha confirmado que el estudiante ha salido positivo Y tienen que pasar tiempo en el hogar, solamente en esos casos específicos ese estudiante tendrá la oportunidad de conectarse a esos hogares.
Okay, let's see, alright, our next question. Okay, next question, Sofia Iniquis, if a student does not pass the screener, how long until they can return to school? Do they need proof of a negative covid test?
I think they can remain, they can return to school if they're, they pass the screener. Do they need proof of a negative covid test? I believe they do not if they don't have any symptoms.
Alright, okay, and then this was a question about testing with the the random testing, and so that we answered this one. Here we go. So, Emergency Alvarez, so they are telling us that our kids are accountable for missing those days, so that it does count against them, question mark?
I'm not sure. Miss Petraza, can you come off mute?
Yes, that I was wondering, because now, Mr. Kim, just, well, you guys answered the question, because I'm like, okay, so They're gonna be accountable for something that they're, basically, like, if they're, they don't have a positive test, They are gonna count as, I mean, it's gonna count as absence, right? If they're they're held home.
If they're held home, it it'll count, they'll, they will be logged on virtually, so it'll be how it was this school year. So they'll be logged on for class and it will count that they are in class.
Only if there's a positive test, like Mr. Kim said.
That's correct.
So, yeah, like before I asked about it, if my kid was having symptoms, but there was no no positive test, like, Let's say today, he's going to school, he's going to school, but he's getting like those symptoms. Do I need to go get him tested to see if that's the case?
I think this school year, correct me if I'm wrong, Miss Win, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head. I know right now we don't have exact guidance on what it's gonna look like this year. But this past year, if, you know, they were, maybe had a sore throat today and then tomorrow they were fine, they were, I believe they were able to come back into the building.
Okay, okay, just making sure, because that that was my confusion, I'm like, so then they're gonna be Absent for the day or for the rest of the?
They would be absent for the day if they would be home.
Okay, okay, well, thank you.
So just so that everybody know, we are gonna have another parent town hall next Wednesday And the hope is that we'll have more clarification for you all around the exact procedures that that CPS will have outlined. So la semana que entra vamos a tener otra reunión a esta hora Y ojalá tengamos más claridad sobre el proceso de de covid Si quizás los estudiantes le dan las preguntas que si se siente mal, o la, qué qué se hace. So ojalá tengamos más respuestas para ustedes para la próxima semana.
Sí, y quiero añadir aquí que el proceso como se dijo anteriormente, si hay una sospecha O alguien comunica que han salido un un examen positivo para el covid, Iniciamos una investigación con la ayuda del distrito y la determinación se hace ahí A cómo se va a aislar, a los estudiantes, a quiénes esto se va a implicar. Pero cuando es algo como estoy, me siento enfermo y estoy mostrando los síntomas, Obviamente como nos nos quedamos enfermos, nos quedaremos en casa, no queremos que vengan En esos casos a la escuela porque no van a pasar el examen de salud, no? Pero si al día como nos pasa regularmente antes del covid, nos sentimos mejor y el próximo día No tenemos esos síntomas, podemos regresar en eso. Cuando hay duda y confirmación que tenemos un caso positivo, ahí es cuando el distrito se involucra. Pero acuérdense, siempre tenemos que ponernos con precaución y quiero que tengan la fe Que con el distrito y sus educadores y nuestra administración, no vamos a poner a peligro A nuestros niños, a nuestros maestros, a ustedes. Por eso vamos a seguir con mucha precaución también hacia adelante. So just to assure our families that we're gonna continue with lots of precaution and, you know, safety in mind. When there is a positive test or an allegation of that or a reporting, We always have to involve the district, the Office of Student Health and Wellness, And then we proceed with the recommendations there based on the investigation And that determination is communicated to families that are impacted in the class And even the school at times as well. And so, in in our experience, it always been to the benefit and the safety of our students and our staff and families. We are, like Miss Torres said, always in the side of caution And in that, we want you to have faith that we will not put in jeopardy our children's health, our educators' health. And we'll act with that type of caution and responsibility on your behalf While your students, our children are here at GSA, so we thank you for that, in trusting us as well.
Alright, we have another question from Sofia Iniquis. If one student in a household fails the screener, does that automatically make all students in the household fail the screener?
So if one student fails the screener, if, I think that if other students are not showing symptoms, I think they're okay to come. It is when the child tests positive for covid that then they're all required to quarantine?
Yes, yes. Let's see.
So la pregunta fue que si uno de la familia No pasa la encuesta, si significa que los otros hermanos necesitan que estar en casa y la respuesta es si Uno de sus hijos está enfermo y los otros están bien, pueden mandar los otros estudiantes. Pero si quizás su hijo hace hace el examen de covid y sale positivo, en esa instancia, todos los Hermanos necesitan que mantenerse en cuarentena en la casa.
Alright, are there any other questions about safety procedures? Questions about coming back to school, maybe the back to school picnic or uniforms? And feel free to add more questions in here as well, but we want to always end our time together. We want to always end our time together with sharing what we're grateful for and what we're thankful for. So if you would like to take this time, go ahead and type something in the chat to share what it is that you're thankful for And we will conclude our time today together.
Gracias padres por estar con nosotros, esta noche sabemos que tenían muchas preguntas. Ojalá que se les haya dado las respuestas, pero si no, para el próximo semana estamos aquí con ustedes Para tratar de ayudarles a tener respuestas para ustedes. So thank you, parents, again, you know, we appreciate that you're here. We knew there was gonna be a lot of questions, which is why we held this session for you all this week. We'll be back again next week at the same time, so please join us. We want to give you as much information as possible. We want to make you feel like, you know, your kids are gonna be safe and anything that we can do to just keep you informed, so thank you all again.